This is a regular meeting, Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. I would ask that everyone silence your cell phones. And if you have any comments on any item, bring it to Jess up front with a blue slip. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Smith.
Every head bow, every eye close. Heavenly Father, we come tonight asking for guidance and wisdom throughout this meeting. Bless us all, bless southwest Louisiana, and please, give us good vision, and Lord have mercy. And I'll ask in your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrepon?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Vice President Barti?
Here.
Mr. Brane?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Mr. Gillery?
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentown? Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Tremonti?
Here.
And President Stelly?
Here.
You do have a question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item one. Adopt a resolution approving a professional engineering contract for the Calhoun Parish sanitary sewer study project. I have a, by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 1A carries. Item 1B. Adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract for the Curry Drive Bridge replacement project. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Andrepon. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 1B carries. 1C. Adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the cooperative endeavor agreement for the overlay of Broad Street between Falconer Lane and Swift Plant Road. I have a motion by Mr. Gillery and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 1C carries. 1D. Adopt a resolution approving a sale and purchase of property agreement for the Yamaco Road Bridge replacement project. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 1D carries. Item 2A. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated January 6th, 2022. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Landry. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 2A carries. Item 2B. Adopt a resolution approving the purchase of property located at 3624 West Preon Lake Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana. I have a motion by Mr. Brane and a second by Mr. Abshar. Mr. Landry.
Is this his piece of property that we discuss over here by Preon Lake Park?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know that was gonna be on that agenda tonight. Didn't know we were moving forward with that.
Well, we, yeah.
I, I've already, I think it was pretty clear that I, maybe I was the only one, I got a problem with it. And then you move forward anyway without saying anything to me.
Well, we, uh...
I mean, is every one of y'all 100% aware of what this is about? I mean, I know, I know the Ward III people are.
Well, Mr. Brian, are you finished, Mr. Landry?
I don't think I am, no.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, it doesn't have the price in here. And if it was just the property, that's fine. But you buying a structure that we don't need. And the prices that I was told, I think it's way, way too much money. Way too much money. I should have been given a heads up that that was on there because I know y'all know how I feel about that. I think it should be deferred at a minimum.
JP.
It, it's just, it's a waste of money, I'm telling you. That's my opinion.
Mr. Brane, do you have any comments? Highlight that for me.
Uh, Mr. President, the only thing I can say is, uh, I was aware it was on the agenda tonight. I, I just assumed everybody was aware it was on the agenda. I mean, I don't...
No.
I mean, I'm just, I guess, maybe taking a poll that everybody...
I read it on there last night.
Can Brian speak, please?
Yes, yes.
Let me just, for the communication part, yes, we met with Ward III jurors because that's, it's in Mr. Brane's district. So we wanted, when that came up a few weeks ago, we, we, and we heard y'all and said, there was, you know, there's a lot of good questions. So we stayed in contact. We also, after that, we had conference calls with the other remaining jurors. And for anybody who didn't make that call, and most of them did, we followed up with individual calls so everybody knew. And we asked all the jurors, please talk to each other. And so I feel like we communicated that well. Uh, if, if that's something where there wasn't proper follow-up, I apologize. I, I had talked to some other jurors who had talked to you subsequent, so I, they weren't speaking for you, but they just had said they talked to you. So I apologize if that wasn't direct enough for you.
Yeah, again, answer to what he...
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Mr. Brane, I think, sent me a text message or whatever. I never agreed with whatever he said, I can assure you. And I was never told, hey, we're gonna move forward anyway. Had I known that, I'd have called every one of these guys up here and told them what I thought about it, because obviously, we weren't all in the same meeting. So it's gonna be... Has the property been appraised?
Yes, sir. It, it was appraised.
And, and so what is, what is the appraisal amount of the property?
Appraisal amount of the property, and this is the property immediately adjacent to the north of Preon Lake Park. It was appraised at $1.6 million. And, and our information that we've gotten, I think verified, and others feel like that is absolutely, it's not, obviously, a small amount of money, but it is not out of line with what those prices are for that type of property. So, yes, it was appraised and we made, we communicated what that amount was.
So what is the purchase price?
1.6 million.
So it's the same as the appraisal?
Yes, your, your policy, and I know, Mr. Landry, you know this, police jury policy in any potential property purchase is you have to get it appraised, you know, we have local appraisers, and you can't pay in excess of that appraisal. Now, sometimes if you, you know, if you're close and the, the other party has another one, you can get a review appraisal, but in this case, the property owner, we communicated once it came in and before we met with y'all, he said he could accept that. So this is in line with your policy. So, yes.
If I, I would accept it too if I was him, no doubt. You, you got a piece of property, that's not a home place anymore. That, that road's fixing to be widened. That, that's not gonna cause that property value to go up, by no means. It's gonna go down. Who would want to live there? There's thousands and thousands of cars that travel there every day. That's only gonna get worse. It's definitely not a place... And look, I've been behind Preon Lake Parks from day one. I was here when we bought the property. And I've been 110% behind it. But the problem with this, how much, out of that appraisal, 1.6, how much is the property worth?
The land value in, you mean in the appraisal?
Exactly. Part of it's the land and part of it's the structure.
No, I think the land appraisal is about 280,000.
We only want the land. I mean, honestly, I've never even gone to the structure to see that it, anything else could be done with it. So, so really, you're paying a lot of value for the, for the home that's there, is what you're doing. You're not paying for the property. I mean, you are, but you're paying a premium for that property because of the structure that's on it. Now, I've heard it's in good shape. I don't know. I've never seen it. And I don't think most of the people up here have seen it either. I know there was some talk about the things that could be done possibly with it. Hey, maybe, maybe it's a great idea, but I mean, there is no way I'm voting for that. No way.
Mr. Andrepon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I read it on the agenda. Staff did advise us of what the intentions were. This doesn't come as a surprise to me. I think it's a good idea. I'm gonna be voting in support of the motion, and I'm gonna tell you why. Several reasons. Number one, it's contiguous to our existing property of that park. That park is utilized by many people throughout this parish, not just folks living in Lake Charles. And what I would like to see with that property is, once the, the home is destroyed or demolished, another large pavilion. What we have or what we see is a number of people in this parish are competing, you know, for family reunions, crawfish balls, what have you, graduation ceremonies, I mean, parties. They're, they're competing and there's not enough space. Another pavilion would be beneficial on that. So I, I think it's a good idea. Had it not been contiguous, then I would probably have some heartburn about it. But I don't, and I'm in full support of it.
Thank you. Mr. Abshar.
I just was gonna speak on the purchase price. In my experience as a banker, it's, the value of it is more than fair, based on current market rates that I've seen. I think it was a, a good price. I had a chance to look at the appraisal, and I completely agree. I'm in full support of the project as it is.
You done? Mr. Brane?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, can you, I know it's on here, I'm not gonna go through and try to find and read it. Tell us the funding source.
The funding source is proposed for this would be split between the parish-wide gaming fund and the...
Can you give me a breakdown?
Yes, yes, sir. Parish-wide gaming fund, 1.2 million, and then Ward, through all the, you have Ward Gaming, we call it, for all the, the wards. And so Ward III, where this is, would contribute 400,000. So that's how it would be made up. And that, you know, it was understood, it's, it's in an area of the parish in Ward III, and that's what we tried to do, depending on what it is. But that was a breakdown that seemed to make a lot of sense, and, you know, the other jurors from the other areas wanted to know that too. And I think that was important, that the Ward III fund helped pay for that. But for a lot of the parks, most of our parks actually, any improvements or purchases in the last, I don't know, 10-plus years, parish-wide gaming is commonly used for those, because it's just so many people that use them.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, with this being said, you know, it coming out of the, the gaming funds, I get it. I don't think it's weighted correctly, but that's another story. Cove Lane, things like that, you know, I mean, but anyway, um, the only way I'm in favor for, of it is we've got, we've got a bunch of other requests. Other people in this room have requests for things, for gaming funds. This goes to the back of the bus, okay? I do not want this expedited and put in front of anything else that is being considered, you know, at this time. I mean, if we have the money to go around and all that, that's fine, but I want the things, and, and we all know, the staff who's working on these projects for, like I said, for a bunch of us, um, I'm not gonna bump any of that. I don't want any of that bumped.
Understood.
That park is fine right now. It'll be fine for five, eight more years. I mean, we don't, if we're gonna buy it, that's fine, but don't buy it and then start spending more money on, on doing something with it when we got all this other stuff that needs, needs tending to.
I agree.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Uh, thank you. You know, I'm definitely for progress myself, but like I say, I would like to know exactly what we plan on doing with the property, because that, that is a large amount of money. Uh, like I say, we do have other projects that are out there and really needing things be done. So I would like to see, you know, what's the plan for the immediate need of the project itself, because to have that 1.6 just sitting out there for years and years, because we have bought property, that we have property, like in my district, that's been sitting there for years. So I don't want to buy, spend 1.6 and have that money just sitting there for, over time. And like I say, with the actual road being changed, with kind of expanding, I don't see us doing anything with that structure, you know what I'm saying? Once the structure comes down, then the actual value of the whole property comes down. So like, so like Joe said, an actual pavilion, if we, that would be the actual master plan for it, then it'd be a good idea, but just to buy, just to hold on to it, I don't, I don't think we're in a, and that's a business of investing for, for a property right now. Thank you.
Go, Brian.
Hey, Mr. President, let me, let me try to address Mr. Barris and Mr. Smith's comments. These very important comments. Y'all know that, and I explain that in our conversations, when you, sometimes we're looking out there and we find something, other times, things come to us, and when it comes to property, as you know, you can't, you have to either acquire it or not, because it was gonna get sold. However, in those discussions, a lot of good talk about what it might be, could be, and in that, and Mr. Brane, I think, had a really good idea, and he's gonna ask Mr. Stelly, President Stelly, to appoint a small group of jurors to say, what could we do? Very clear, y'all need to discuss that, get the input you need, we need to be deliberate, but not, and I'm, I'm, just for the record, I strongly encourage the group, don't worry so much about doing this overnight, you got a lot of other parks, but let's plan and take your time, and that doesn't mean put it off for 10 years, but it means we don't want other things to be pushed back to make sure this gets improved. And it's gonna have to be done in a way, obviously, that makes the whole park look kind of seamless. It's not gonna be like a separate thing. So it's that sweet spot between planning deliberately, but not pushing it in front of other things we need to do. This is a very, this is a long line of history by the police jury, where you have, I think, in a very good way, acted on properties next to parks, and not just parks, but other things, where it was very strategic and advantageous for you. And that's what we felt this was, but what's gonna go there, that's up to y'all, and we're gonna make sure that process is steady, but not jumping the gun.
Can Mr. Burley ask? Can Mr. Burley? Go ahead, Mr. Landry.
All right, two or three people have talked about tearing the structure down, so is that the plan, that that structure's gonna be torn down?
No, so we're not doing, nothing's gonna happen until y'all, in a process you go forth, decide what you want to do. So, no, sir. It might be in the end, but there, if you're asking...
Okay, well, if that happens in the end, then you paid 1.4 million dollars for a house that you're gonna tear down. I mean, I'm sorry, but that, it is what it is. That's what it is. You paid 200 and something of the, or whatever, maybe it's 1.35, but you still paid over a million bucks for a house, you're gonna tear it down.
Mr. Burley? He can go pass it. Go, Mr. Brane.
That's all I got. I'm not saying, I don't wanna say nothing else.
I just want to respond to what you said. I agree with you. I, I, I'm...
I don't think you do.
At this, well, as far as the structure goes, I don't think, and it, like I said, I'm gonna try to get a group together, try to figure out what the best plan for that property is, but I, I don't think I'm in favor of tearing the house down. I think it could be utilized in a lot of other different ways. Mr. Andrepon suggested a venue, yeah, it could be modified into a venue, but I, I, I don't think tearing the house down, I'm not, I don't think I'm for that at this time, until we come, put our heads together and come up with something. So that's all I have. I agree with you on that.
Mr. Burley?
I too was, I'm in favor of it, and I was aware that was gonna be on there tonight in our conference call. But I want to go on record as far as why are we talking about parks and boat launches? I challenge anybody to come to Westlake and see the supposed boat launch we have there. It's a joke. I'm, I'm proud of all the other boat launches and parks we have in this parish, but Riverside and Westlake is a joke. You can park a maximum of four cars or four trucks with boat trailers there. And we've had this saltwater berry that we could use the saltwater berry, but it's been out, they've had it fenced off for almost two years now, and they, they can't tell me when it's gonna be back in. I mean, the boat launch that we have at Anthony Ferry is three times what we have at Riverside and Westlake, and I would, I would swap you Riverside for 210 on the north side without a wharf is better than what we have in Westlake. I'm serious. Okay? And so down the road, I want something better. I think we deserve more than what we have, and I'm gonna be asking y'all to support that down the road.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment? I think that we also talked about an outside consultant for the property that's being purchased, right? To make sure the blend is good with the plan on, on the, you know, on the project?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Sorry, I, I know, I misunderstood. Yes, sir, we would want to make sure we had a designer that could help us, whatever y'all decide, to make it look like it's not something you're walking into that's different.
Right. Okay. I just kinda want to throw that in there.
Yes.
Thank you, Brian.
That's correct.
I think we're done with the motion. Okay. Move on to item 3A.
Ooh.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna have to roll call. The roll call vote.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Abshar?
Yes.
Mr. Andrepon?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes, with an asterisk.
Yes, with a, asterisk. Uh, Mr. Barti?
Yes.
Mr. Brane?
Yes.
Mr. Burley?
Yes.
Mr. Gillery?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tremonti?
Yes.
The motion carried.
Okay. Now we're done with item 2B.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to 3A. Adopt a resolution approving the Louisiana compliance questionnaire required in connection with the police jury's 2021 audit. I have a motion by Mr. Brane and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 3A carries. Item 4A. Move on 4A. Approve applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends one new application and two renewal applications be approved. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 4A carries.
Move on 4B.
Item 4B. Adopting ordinance approving the purchase of property located at 911 Taylor Street, Sulfur, to mitigate future flood losses of this repetitive loss structure. I have a motion by Mr. Andrepon and a second by Mr. Brane. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 4B carries.
Move on 4C.
4C. Adopting ordinance approving the purchase of property located at 386 Cobb Circle, Lake Charles, to mitigate future flood losses of this repetitive loss structure. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Gillery. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 4C carries.
Move on 4D.
4D. Adopting ordinance rescinding ordinance number 7397 due to the property being redeemed. I have a motion by Mr. Andrepon and a second by Mr. Brane. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 4D carries.
Move on 4E.
4E. Adopt a resolution extending executive order 2020-09A, which waives zoning restrictions and fees for temporary dwellings, dwelling units as a result of Hurricanes Laura and Delta through October 31st, 2022. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Abshar. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item 4E carries. 4F. Adopt a resolution...
Move on 4A.
Extending executive order 2020-15, which waived free board elevation requirements as a result of Hurricanes Laura and Delta through October 31st, 2022. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 4F carries.
Move on 5A.
5A. Approve all payment of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Andrepon and a second by Mr. Abshar. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5A carries. 5B. Advertise for bids for Calhoun Parish project number 22-102-0018. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5B carries? Was that 5B?
Yes.
5C. Advertise for bids for Calhoun Parish project number 22-103-004. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5C carries. 5D. Authorize the parish purchasing agent to purchase vehicles and/or equipment for use by police jury departments. I have a motion by Mr. Lewis and a second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5D carries.
Move on 5E.
5E. Adopt a resolution accepting Calhoun Parish project number 20-301-004 as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Andrepon and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5E carries. 5F. Adopt a resolution on request for proposals for application and data tracking software for the emergency rental assistance program. I have a motion by Mr. Gillery and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5F carries. Action on bids for plastic pipe. Anybody buying plastic pipe?
What number is that?
Mr. Gillery and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any obje, any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 5G carries. Action on bids for herbicides and weed control chemicals.
Move on 5A.
I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Hayes. Any discussion? Any objection? 5H carries. 5I. Action on bids for metal signed posts.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by...
Lewis.
Mr. Lewis. Any objection? Any discussion first? Any objection? Seeing none. 5I carries. 5J.
Louis.
Mr. Louis. Any objection? Any discussion first? Any objection? Seeing none. 5I carries. 5J. Action on bids for signed faces.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Any objection? 5J carries. Item 6A. Board appointments. Airport Authority of Airport District 1, Mr. Harm DeRusso.
Second, reappoint.
I have a motion by Mr. Braim and a second by Mr. Abshar to reappoint Mr. DeRusso. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Mr. DeRusso is reappointed. Item 6B. Ward 6, Fire Protection District number 1. I need a motion to defer both items. I have a motion to defer by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Abshar. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. 6B is a deferral. Item 6C. Water Works District number 8 of Ward 3 and 8. Resignation of Mr. Ricky Bachelor, and the, um, motion is to appoint Mr. Guillory, Mr. Paul Guillory. I have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Mr. Guillory is appointed. Item 6D. Water Works District number 14 of Ward 5. Move, is a motion to reappoint George E. Miller, Mr. Andre Pott, and a motion by Mr. Andre Pott and a second by Mr. Richard. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? Hearing none. Item, Mr. George Miller is reappointed. Item 7 is advise items. We will go to number 8. A consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Robert Bob Hardy, Mayor of City of Westlake. Mr. Burley.
I'm sure everybody here tonight knew Bob, best way to describe him is a true leader or a true servant. And he really had his priorities straight. It was God, family, and then community. And one of his famous sayings was to always do the right thing for the right reason. And I think all of us in this room need to think about that for a minute, on all our actions, all our decisions, do the right thing for the right reason. And when he took over as Mayor of Westlake, we were severely in the red. Brian might know a little bit about this, but Bob and Jerry Milner told me, he said,